Okay. Hi, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Hello, can we have order? Thank you so much. Hi. Thank you so much for coming. Calling to order the regular meeting of the Albany Unified School District Board of Education. Today is Tuesday, April 29th, and the time is 7:06 PM. Can we please have a roll call to establish quorum?
Student trustee Shepard.
Here.
Student trustee Debdar.
Here.
Trustee Inklis.
Here.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
Trustee Davidson is absent this evening. Vice President Mahoney.
Here.
President Hopwood.
Here.
Superintendent Stone.
Here.
And can we please have the reading of the AUSD Mission and Vision Statement and Meeting Norms from our student board members?
Mission and Vision Statement. The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment addressing the individual needs of each student.
Meeting norms. Maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for our students. Make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view even if one disagrees.
Thank you. And now Vice President Mahoney will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you'd like to participate.
Our special allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now moving on to item four of our agenda, which is Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. The board took no action in closed session, but just to correct a mistake on the closed session agenda, which said that we had conference with legal counsel pending litigation. We did not have a conference with legal counsel. It was actually a report of a conversation with legal counsel. So now we're moving on to item five, Approval of the Agenda.
I move to approve as-is.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the agenda passes unanimously. Now, item six is our spotlight on Albany High School. So welcome, Principal McNally.
Thank you very much. So I actually want to turn this over to some representatives from our Peer Help program and really spotlight the work they do. One of the really powerful things at Albany High School is the work that students can do educating other students. And I want to take this opportunity to show off their work. So with that, I'll hand it over to our Peer Help folks.
Thank you. And now Vice President Mahoney will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you'd like to participate.
Our special allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now moving on to item four of our agenda, which is Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. The board took no action in closed session, but just to correct a mistake on the closed session agenda, which said that we had conference with legal counsel pending litigation. We did not have a conference with legal counsel. It was actually a report of a conversation with legal counsel. So now we're moving on to item five, Approval of the Agenda.
I move to approve as-is.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the agenda passes unanimously. Now, item six is our spotlight on Albany High School. So welcome, Principal McNally.
Hey, thank you very much. So I actually want to turn this over to some representatives from our Peer Help program and really spotlight the work they do. One of the really powerful things at Albany High School is the work that students can do educating other students. And I want to take this opportunity to show off their work. So with that, I'll hand it over to our Peer Help folks.
Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so my name is Tijra Grogans, and I'm one of the counselors at the high school and one of the co-advisors for the Peer Help program, which I work with Shelley Ball, our mental health coordinator, on. We initiated this program about nineteen years ago. Both of us have a background in, at Planned Parenthood. We were both educators there. And so, once we became employees of Albany, there was the need for students who wanted to learn about safer sex and they wanted to actually be peer educators. And because we had background in that, we wanted to make it happen. And so with that said, I'm going to turn it over because it's always wonderful for you all to hear from the youth that are in the program. So I introduce to you Kira and Alex, and they're going to take it from here.
Hello, my name is Alex. My first impression of Peer Help was my freshman year in my IHS class. We had two presentations being presented to us. First in the, yeah, it was the fall, of the mental health presentation that they did. And the second one for the sex ed presentation. The sex ed presentation resonated with me more because it was more uncomfortable, but given the circumstances, I think the peer helpers that presented at that time really resonated with me. I want, I noticed that peer helpers there, they made it seem like we were already a community. It was a very uncomfortable topic, given what it was, and they made it seem like it was nothing. It felt very communal. It felt very safe. And my classroom in particular, there was no big friend groups in it, so everyone was very quiet. But amazingly, they got everyone to speak at least once, I think. And I thought that was very incredible because our teacher had, well, no. We were just a very quiet class and they were able to speak with us and got us to participate. But the reason why I wanted to join Peer Help was because coming out of COVID, out of the pandemic, I was a very anxious and nervous kid. I did not know how to speak in front of a group, a group. And I wanted to improve that. So I thought joining Peer Help would improve that and put me outside of that comfort zone and get me out there in doing that. And I got in. I was very excited and with that, I was able to make a lot of new friends. The community took me in and helped me when I made some errors and really didn't make me feel bad that I made errors. And with that, I was able to progress and I was able to better my presentational skills. And I am very grateful for that. And it's been a great four years, three years with them. Right now, I am in leadership. I've been with them for three years and it's just been quite a time.
Hi, so my name is Kira. I'm also senior at Albany High School. And I've also been in Peer Help since sophomore year and am fortunately on leadership this year. And I'm here to talk more about just what we do. So basically, Peer Help, we're about twenty students and we meet every advisory, so every Wednesday and Friday for about forty minutes each. And I would say it's a perfect time for us because it doesn't get in our ways of classes or like lunchtime. And so, we get to just really focus and not worry about missing anything. And so for Peer Help, basically, there are seniors, juniors, and sophomores. And because of that, we get to just immerse ourselves with all different kinds of people. I never really knew upperclassmen or underclassmen when I was a sophomore and junior. But with Peer Help, I was able to get, getting to know older people and younger people and just like taking their own experiences and perspectives. And I would also say Peer Help is quite a diverse group of people. Like, there are people who always, you know, spend most of their time doing sports, choir, musical theater, band, people who come from different backgrounds, experiences. And I love it so much. Like, I don't think I ever expected myself to be immersed in such a diverse group. And yeah, and so, most of the time in Peer Help, we spend our time preparing presentations, making the presentations. But we don't just, you know, write stuff down and memorize it, but we actually learn about it first. And I think that's one of the most important things about Peer Help, is that the peer helpers actually educate themselves on the topics first. And it feels like we prioritize our education first and then prioritize the underclassmen because we think it's super important to, if we're presenting on these really important topics such as mental health and safe sex to these underclassmen, we should know about it first and we should be able to confidently speak about it so they can listen to us and feel connected to us. So with that, before we even start the presentations, Shelley, Ms. Grogans, or even Peer Help leadership, we teach everyone about the topics. We learn about depression, anxiety. We learn about the different, the different parts of it and how we can help ourselves, how to cope. And we even have very like intimate conversations about our own experiences, which I think is really, really nice. And for safe sex, we, we study like the different birth control, birth control methods, and just even like abstinence. We learn about all the different parts. And it's really helped me, honestly, because I don't think I would ever like really know so much about these topics if I wasn't in Peer Help. And I'm happy that we're able to speak on it to underclassmen because I, I think a lot of times, they don't have, I don't know, that education can be so rare sometimes. So, yeah, it's really nice. And so, other than spending time with presentations, well, one of the things we do is we also try to practice with everyone. And one of the things we emphasize the most in Peer Help is helping the newbies. So in Peer Help, the people who have stayed there for more than a year, we call them old farts, and then the people who are new, we call them newbies. And we try to give them the most help as possible because old farts, we've stayed for like a while since like sophomore year. So when it comes to practicing presentations, we give them the first opportunity to speak. We get into small groups. We let them review it and ask us questions if they have any. So I think it's a really welcoming space for just new people. But we also give our old farts some chances to practice as well, which is really helpful because we tend to forget sometimes. But yeah, and other than, other than practicing presentations and getting ready, we're still a very tight-knit group of people. And what we do a lot of times, once a month or once every two months, we do check-ins. So this is where we get in a circle. We basically go around and we just talk about our day, talk about what's been going on in our life. And not a lot of students get the opportunity to just like speak to someone and just rant or just talk about, you know, anything that's been stressing them out, any achievements they're very proud of. So it's really nice. And I feel more connected with everyone. It feels more intimate. And sometimes when I'm having like a super bad day and then I'm like, oh, I have Peer Help and we're doing check-ins, I just get to like talk about what's going on. Everyone's very respectful. Everything's always confidential and everything's just really, really nice. And I feel more connected with them, with that. But other than that, we practice presentations in the beginning of the year. We do some activities like team bonding. And yeah, so now we're going to just go talk about the presentations a little more. So as I said, one of the presentations we do in the beginning of the year is the intent versus impact presentation to seventh graders. And with this presentation, it actually started when Mr. Mapes contacted us, the principal of the middle school. He contacted us and talked about how there's been lots of problems with dark humor and phone use at the middle school. And so, we wanted to help that as teenagers who have phones, who went through quarantine with lots of phone use and have experienced, you know, dark humor, all of that. We wanted to use our own experiences to help them, but we also wanted to know their own experiences. Because the difference between, you know, what the middle schoolers are seeing online and what we saw online, we're just, it's, we don't fully understand it. So by preparing ourselves, we basically sent a survey out to all the seventh graders with Mr. Mapes' help, where we asked about, you know, anonymously, their experiences, what have they seen, what have they done? And how can we help, but how can they help themselves? And with that, we took some data and we basically created a very like informal presentation. It was more conversational. We wanted to let them feel like they can be honest with us. So we, in the presentations, we all split up into little groups. It was just a few peer helpers with a few middle schoolers. And we just asked them, what have you experienced? What can you do? What can we do? And we talked about our own experiences. I mean, we have lots of experiences with phone use. We've seen dark humor like every day, it's like on our phones and everything. So we were, it was like we were just talking just one-on-one. And I thought that was really, really nice. And so, our next presentation we also do is the depression and anxiety presentation. And we do these to freshmen in the IHS classes. And we talk about the different signs of depression, anxiety. We talk about the ways to cope. We also talk about very important facts about how to help yourselves, how to identify it, and how to help others. And one of the most impactful parts of the presentation is the testimonials. So every year, basically, peer helpers, they can write a testimonial about their own experiences with depression and anxiety. And it's always anonymous. No one knows. And then, we put some in the presentation and we read it out loud to the freshmen. And all they do is listen. But these testimonials, there is a variety of different experiences. And it can be super sad and uncomfortable at some points, but so real and raw. And it allows people to feel just connected. Because it's hard sometimes for young people to like sort of just have to listen about blah, 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 all this stuff, depression, anxiety. But when you hear a real experience from someone in the high school and know that, oh, it could be any of your classmates, that is like what really impacts a student. And Shelley, one of the other advisors of Peer Help, she's told us that after every anxiety and depression presentation, there's always more people coming to the mental health office reaching for help. And I think it's just, I feel really happy that we can do that for the students. But I also feel really happy that the students can feel comfortable enough to just reach out to the mental health office, which is really great. But yeah. And the last presentation we do, which is usually in the second semester, is the safe sex presentation. And in the safe sex presentation, we usually say it's a little more like upbeat presentation because we're more like interactive with it. We cover a lot of parts of sexual health. We talk about birth control. We talk about, talk about abstinence. We also talk about, for people that abstinence may not apply to them, we talk about how to keep themselves safe and everything. And so, we kind of wanted to cover, one of the little parts of the presentation we wanted to cover was in the beginning, where we talk about emotionally, emotionally safe sex. So we talk about how emotionally safe sex means consent, and we have these signs for everyone to see. We talk about how emotionally safe sex means if someone says no, you stop, whether that's in the middle or in the beginning. And then we also talk about how being under the influences is not emotionally safe sex. And yeah, and we also do like little demos and just interactive parts of the presentation. And I think it's a really great way for students to actually learn about this without feeling uncomfortable when an adult talks about it. Because when a student talks about it, it's just like, feels more relatable, more chill. And yeah, I'm really happy to have been in Peer Help for so long. And I feel like I've learned so much as a peer helper and connected with so many people. And I'm really happy we can help people. So yeah.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak this evening. Are there any questions that you all have?
No questions, but just a big appreciation. Thank you so much for coming and sharing. Thank you so much. So we're now moving on to item seven, which is recognition. The board recognizes and promotes Awareness Months, Appreciation Weeks, and National Days with proclamations that encourage the district to observe these occasions with appropriate events and instructional activities. Our first proclamation this month is to recognize May 25 as Jewish American Heritage Month. And I think, is student board member Shepard going to read this one?
Proclamation number 2024-25-08, recognizing May as Jewish American Heritage Month. Whereas Albany Unified School District is committing to fostering an equitable, inclusive, and safe environment where all students, families, and staff feel seen, respected, and supported. And whereas in 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month, a designation upheld by every U.S. president since to recognize the significant contributions of Jewish Americans to the United States. And whereas Jewish Americans have shaped every facet of American life, advancing civil rights, social justice, and democracy, and contributing to science, education, politics, arts, literature, medicine, and business. And whereas there is an estimated 5.8 billion Jewish people in the United States and approximately 350,000 in the Bay Area, including individuals who identify as Jewish by religion, ethnicity, culture, and/or family background. And whereas Jewish Americans are racially, ethnically, and culturally diverse, and Judaism encompasses both a religion and a peoplehood, representing a broad spectrum of identities, practices, and histories. And whereas Jewish immigrants come to the United States seeking refuge from religious and ethnic persecution, yet in recent years, anti-Semitic incidents, including hate speech, graffiti, vandalism, online harassment, verbal and physical threats, and violence have risen significantly both nationally and in California, impacting the safety and well-being of Jewish students, staff, and families. And whereas Albany Unified School District reaffirms its commitment to standing firmly against anti-Semitism, bias, and all forms of hate affecting the Jewish community. And whereas recent years have seen a documented rise in anti-Semitic incidents nationally and in California, impacting the safety and well-being of Jewish students, staff, and families. And whereas AUSD is committing to including Jewish American history in contemporary voices in school curricula, expanding access to culturally relevant instructional materials and ensuring that Holocaust education is taught in a way that is meaningful and developmentally appropriate. And whereas AUSD recognizes the importance of providing culturally responsive mental health services, ensuring that school calendars and activities are mindful of major Jewish holidays, including Shabbat. So many, so students and staff are not disadvantaged due to religious observation. And whereas AUSD will continue to partner with Jewish students, families, educators, and community leaders to foster inclusive schools, Jewish identity is affirmed and celebrated. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Albany Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month, encourages all district schools to recognize and celebrate the contributions of Jewish Americans, and commits to ongoing actions that uplift Jewish voices, combat anti-Semitism, and promote equity and belonging for all.
Thank you so much. And now moving to item seven B, Proclamation Recognizing May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And student board member Deidre would read this.
Proclamation number 2024-25-09, recognizing May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas the Albany Unified School District values and honors the diverse backgrounds, experiences, and identities of all students, families, and staff, and recognizes the importance of creating inclusive spaces where every voice is heard and every culture is celebrated. And whereas the month of May has been designated nationally as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, commemorating the arrival of the first Japanese immigrant to the United States in May 1843, and the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad, built largely by Chinese laborers in May 1869. And whereas AAPI communities include over fifty ethnic groups speaking more than a hundred languages, encompass people with ancestral ties to East Asia, Southeast Asia, South Asia, the Pacific Islands, and indigenous people of the Pacific such as Native Hawaiians and Chamoros. And whereas despite enduring significant systemic barriers, including exclusionary immigration laws such as the Chinese Exclusion Act of 1882, the incarceration of Japanese-Americans during World War II, and ongoing discrimination, AAPI communities have contributed profoundly to American society through leadership in education, science, healthcare, business, politics, arts, civil rights, and social justice movements. And whereas AAPI individuals continue to face racial discrimination and xenophobia, including a documented rise in anti-Asian hate incidents in recent years, with the organization stopped AAPI hate reporting over 11,000 hate incidents nationwide from March 2020 to 2022. It's proportionately affecting women, youth, and elders. And whereas AUSD acknowledges the importance of countering stereotypes and promoting accurate and complex narratives about AAPI identities and experiences, and reaffirms its commitment to equity, inclusion, and the celebration of cultural heritage through district curriculum practices and policies. And whereas recognizing and celebrating AAPI Heritage Month also allows students, educators, families, and the broader community to engage in critical learning about our shared histories, deepen cross-cultural understanding, and uplift the voices and stories of AAPI individuals past and present. past and present. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Albany Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of May twenty-twenty-five as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourages schools and the community to honor AAPI heritage through education, celebration, and collective action that promotes equity, cultural awareness, and inclusion for all.
Thank you both very much. And now moving on to item eight, back to the student board members and their report, reporting back on the student advocacy committee. Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Stone, President Hopwood, Vice President Mahoney, Board of Trustees, and the audience. Today I'm here with the Student Advocacy Committee to present our annual student engagement survey results. So actually before we begin, let's do a quick run of introductions. My name is Ayush, as you know, and I'm the president of SAC and a senior at Albany High School.
My name is Rudy. I'm also a senior at Albany High School, and I am the co-Vice President of the Student Advocacy Committee.
My name is Consell Churak. I am a junior and also the Vice President of the Student Advocacy Committee.
My name is Finn Willetts-Musell. I'm a junior and I'm the Secretary of the Student Advocacy Committee.
My name is Dexter Johnson, and I'm a junior at Albany High and a member of the SAC.
Hi, I'm Lucas Spie. I'm a junior at Albany High School, and I'm also just a member.
Hi, I'm Colin. I'm a freshman and I'm also just a member of SAC.
So before we start, I'd like to talk about our mission and what we do. So really quick, we have every year, we send out surveys to the middle school and the high school, and we present about key issues that we learned from the surveys. And in the past, we have presented for both the middle school and the high school. But today, we're actually split up into two presentations because we established the junior student advocacy committee, and they're here with us, and they'll be presenting after we do. So how we do it is we, like I said, survey the student body, and then we also invite students outside of the committee to speak on relevant issues. And then we also do site visits at the elementary school campuses. So our key topics for today's presentation are campus cleanliness, curriculum diversity, and career readiness, academic equity, and school sports.
Did you know that sixty-three-point-three percent of the students surveyed had listed campus cleanliness as a major issue? Much like last year, this issue topped our charts once again. The main areas of concern were the bathrooms and eating areas. And here are some quotes that show the importance of improving our campus cleanliness.
All right. So to elaborate more on the issue at hand, we decided to pick one focus point, which were the school bathrooms. And as, as most of the students know, the school bathrooms are not the most clean place, or bathrooms in general aren't the most clean place, and anywhere to be honest. But our bathrooms have a bit of a problem. One of the great, one student said, there is too much vandalism, and that is true with like paper towels, sometimes even excrement being on the floors at times. And that is, just does not foster a very clean environment. And a lot of the times, the basic cleaning materials, such as like the hand soap we use, toilet paper, paper towels are missing, and mirrors are missing from the boy's school bathroom. So for this pressing issue, we don't just want to complain, we want to provide solutions. So some short-term solutions that we have thought of is first of all transparency. As you can see on the slide, we would like something like maybe like a timetable where students can know more about when the bathrooms were actually cleaned, since now there have been a couple of student responses who have just said, we don't even know if the bathrooms are being cleaned at all. So this transparency is something that we will appreciate. And a quick fix is just adding more, adding these basic supplies, maybe allocating some of the budget, since a lot of us really want to just stay clean. And having the soap, soap to wash your hands, and the paper towels to dry them would really help in that matter. Okay. So now on to some more long-term solutions. These are just ideas. They might not be feasible, but we will like to try our best to help improve on this issue. Since last year, years before, this has always been the greatest point of complaint. So on a more positive note, the gender-neutral bathrooms have always been like highly rated. They are clean, and everybody just like enjoys using them. They feel private, and the supplies are there. So if, like the new bathrooms in the annexes of both the middle school and the high school, if existing bathrooms could be renovated to have more of these, that would, I feel like that would help solve some of the issues we have, since they're often way more clean and are, and it's more respected inside there. Another long-term solution we have proposed is more school-wide assemblies, just or some sort of like action to inform students about this topic, like making sure everyone knows about this. Because I feel like we all live pretty tumultuous lives. We have a lot of things at hand, and sometimes we just forget to stay clean. So yeah. So if we could just have like maybe one school-wide assembly at the beginning of the year, just like to, to foster more respect about the spaces that we inhabit, feel like that could help solve a lot of the issues. This could start really young, too. Elementary schools all the way up. And that way, we can teach our kids what like, what is like morally correct and like what is just hygienically correct, you know? So yeah, that's what I have to say.
Okay. The next thing that I would like to talk about is curriculum diversity and career readiness. So when it comes to curriculum diversity, the two largest calls for improvement by students were the lack of AP opportunities for underclassmen at Albany High, which Consell will talk about more in a second, and also the imbalance of STEM and humanities when it comes to AP classes at the high school. Like for example, if a student is really interested in history, there are very few high-level options for them to choose from. And as you can see, this third student here really wanted to take AP US History and AP European History, but they're not offered at the high school, so they couldn't take it.
Good evening. I'd like to start with a quote from College Board themselves, and they wrote, "AP isn't just for juniors and seniors." In fact, over one million ninth and tenth graders, ninth grade and tenth grade students took AP courses last year. And by starting AP classes earlier, you'll build important skills that will help you succeed throughout high school and beyond. We've heard from our students, and tonight, we'd like to briefly highlight some key areas where we can better support their aspirations. Firstly, there's a strong desire for more advanced placement courses, especially in humanities. Students are eager for rigorous college-level work in subjects like history and literature. Secondly, our AP course policy for underclassmen is a concern. Restricting access for freshmen and limiting it for sophomores may hinder early exploration of interests and put our students at a disadvantage compared to peers who can earn college credit earlier. As one student noted, this restriction contributes to an overwhelming AP course load for upperclassmen. Thirdly, students want more proactive college and career guidance. This includes more diverse college visits and opportunities to connect with professionals through career fairs and networking. Beyond college prep, we've also heard a call for more hands-on and vocational pathways. Students feel there's a need for course supporting diverse life goals and beyond the traditional four-year university. And finally, students want better visibility of existing college and career resources and more opportunities for academic opportunities, such as like competitions, and even just volunteering. And so as addressing these points will allow us to better meet the needs and aspirations of all of our Albany High School students, we've brainstormed some possible solutions for the board to consider. Okay. So building on the challenges we discussed, we're moving forward with potential solutions. To meet the demand for more rigorous academics, we hope to expand our AP course offerings, especially in humanities, providing more challenging opportunities and options within required courses. We also need to reevaluate our underclassman AP policy. We should explore removing restrictions, or to make a more feasible option, in the short term, we plan to significantly expand honors courses to allow younger students to engage with challenging material earlier, aligning us with neighboring districts and potentially easing upperclassmen course loads. To boost college and career engagement, we ought to take a proactive approach by reaching out to a wider range of colleges, leveraging our alumni for more frequent and diverse fairs, and offering workshops on applications, financial aid, and career paths. So recognizing diverse interests will explore reintroducing or expanding courses in trades, applied arts, technical skills, to provide meaningful learning opportunities for all students. And additionally, we need to improve the accessibility and communication of college and career resources through a centralized online platform, more informational sessions, and generally more consistent awareness campaigns. And finally, we aim to increase the number and variety of extracurriculars, particularly in academic competitions and volunteering, to enrich the student experience and build valuable skills. And so these are our initial solutions, and we're committed to working together to implement these changes for a challenging, supportive, and well-rounded education for every Albany High School student. Thank you. Next up, we're going to talk a little bit about academic equity. There are some key issues that we have here. Many different students have different learning styles. And you can see up here, there's a quote about different learning styles need to be considered and worked into the curriculum. And maybe getting into solutions a little bit, we don't believe this should fall just on teachers, because they're obviously doing their very best and working incredibly hard. So we think that the school as a whole should organize more events to help students learn how to study and learn how to help themselves a little bit more, too. Another big issue is consistency in grading. So obviously, teachers are, multiple teachers teach the same exact class, and we think that there's often a gap between how teachers grade the exact same class. And that can be really frustrating for students. And so I think that's a really important thing that we also need to focus on. Up here again is another quote from a student from our survey. General ed classes like history and English should be more consistent based on what teacher someone has. Those classes generally have very different curriculum based on teacher, and some students end up unprepared for years ahead or not academically fulfilled. And this happens because there are different grading scales, and that can be a big issue. Finally, learning accommodations are a really big deal. Obviously, schools are legally required to help and accommodate students with learning disabilities. And while our student, while our school meets these requirements, I think, we could go more above and beyond. Because as it is explained here, students often have to take initiative more to make sure that their five-over-four plan is met, rather than teachers stepping forward and being like, here is what I know about what you need, how can I help with this? So here are our proposed solutions. There's, we should have a greater awareness of learning styles and differences, providing more diverse resources for studying and learning content. And this isn't just teachers, this is as a school as a whole. We think that for consistency in grading, we should propose a standardized grading scale for classes that teachers adhere to, and then teachers can coordinate between each other who are teaching the exact same course. And for learning accommodations, I think teachers should of course be notified, but also be given more resources that are like, here is how you can help your student with a plan, and make sure that they feel like they're being heard and helped. Yeah.
Our next area of discussion is school sports. Okay, so the first main issue that students have is PE credit. So many students feel that it's unfair to do PE alongside sports that they do outside of school, with one student saying, I don't know why I have to do PE when I already do sports outside of school. It's not, it's not benefiting me at all, and it's only making my injuries worse. So students athletes feel like the effort they put, they're putting in sports outside of school should be recognized and should receive PE credit. Similarly, many students believe that their club sports should be recognized for PE credit as well. One student states, it's frustrating that club sports, such as mountain biking and ultimate, don't count for PE credit in the same way that school sports do. While club sports' weekly practices are more sparse, their seasons last much longer, and therefore equate to as much time dedicated as a school sport. Even though many, many club sports have less frequent practices or meetings over a longer period of time, they're still putting in their time to become, time and effort to become student athletes and should receive credit.
Another area of concern around school sports is the diversity in funding. So the main point is, or the first point is, is that the students want a more diverse selection of school sports, with a couple of students saying it should, referring to school sports, should include more diverse sports like Madden and ping pong, not only Western ones. And some students also want more entertaining sports such as rock climbing. Another area of discussion was that club sports should become official sports. I think this is the more popular one that I've seen, because like as one student says, mountain biking should definitely be an official school sport within the school. And I've been hearing this with ultimate frisbee as well, as the two quotes show. And then the last point is that students want better sport funding. One student says that the distribution of money feels very unbalanced. The boys' basketball and football team seems to get a lot more resources. I know many sports teams have been fundraising for a long time just to get basic equipment replaced. We know that we have a lot of strong athletic boosters and other ways of funding for our school sports, but I think some students are finding it unfair that they have to reuse the same resources every year, while maybe the more popular sports are getting new equipment every year.
So a solution that we have for the PE credit issue is, which may not be possible, is that club sports and outside, outside sports should be considered for PE credit. Additionally, for sports diversity, research should be done into more non-Western sports, assess interest in said sports, and consider them to be added as actual school sports. For club sports, we should consider them as well to become official school sports. Lastly, we should supply each sport with adequate funding, resources, and operations, and support current fundraising that are already in place for those sports.
That concludes our student engagement survey. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Anyone? Well, we are, one thing to mention, because you have, we have a little junior presentation too, don't we? And we're getting much for time a little bit, so I just want to keep it brief, but I want to show appreciation for all of you. Thank you so much. It's so insightful, we're so grateful for everything you do. Couple of you at the beginning, by the way, said, oh, I'm just a member. Did you notice that? You were giving your officer roles, and a couple said, yes, there's no such thing as just a member. We're so grateful to all of you for all the work that you put in. So thank you. That's all I have to say. Does anyone else have a comment or a question?
Trying to put all my thoughts together, but really, really impressive and well-done on the presentation and also preparing so many possible solutions for us. Whether or not they're feasible, just the fact that you guys took the time to come up with these solutions, present them as an option for us to consider is like really, I appreciate that, because oftentimes, I think as a board, we do get a lot of things that folks are concerned about, but we don't always get that input of like what you think might be a good solution to that, especially because we might not have that experience and might not know that. So I really appreciate that. I really appreciated all of the, really all of it, but I think the stuff about sports and academic, academic equity and curriculum and diversity are things that have not come up as much as usually the bathroom issue does. So I really appreciate that those topics were also brought forth. I took a lot of notes that I'm gonna like look back on, and a lot of things that I was, as I was listening to you guys, I was thinking about things that actually our superintendent has already talked was thinking about things that actually our superintendent has already talked about on ways that she wants to kind of work on these issues. So I love that we have kind of, on both ends, we're seeing, you know, folks seeing an issue and trying to figure out how to solve it. And hopefully, this time next year, you know, when you, when you or the next, you know, committee comes forth, we can say, "Hey, you guys brought this last year, and this is what we were able to fix." That's what I'm looking forward to. But yeah, thank you all for being here and for everything that you guys shared. It was really, really well-done. Super appreciate the time and effort you guys put into it.
Thank you. I'll now hand it to the middle schoolers, or the, yeah, the middle schoolers for the Junior Student Advocacy Committee Student Engagement Survey presentation.
Hello, everybody. Hope you're having a wonderful night. We are the Junior Student Advocacy Committee, also known as JSAC. My name is Dylan Chu, and I'm in the seventh grade.
My name's Mira Joshi. I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Calvin Cara Disterhoff. I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Jason Yu, and I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Anika Jane. I'm in seventh grade.
My name is Brian By, and I'm in seventh grade.
My name's Orin Koosh, and I'm in seventh grade.
Okay, so we were created by the Student Advocacy Committee last year, or the SAC, and they've created us because they wanted student representation in the middle school as well. At first, we only began with five members, and now we've grown to over thirty. We aim to identify and solve multiple different problems at the middle school, and yeah.
So we conducted a student engagement survey last month, and we received nearly eight hundred responses out of about nine hundred thirty students. Forty percent of them were sixth graders, and about thirty-eight percent were seventh graders, and about twenty percent were eighth graders. The main points are campus cleanliness, discrimination on campus, and different learning styles. Then there's additional info and key takeaways.
So the first topic is campus cleanliness. The problem is an excess of litter and trash, especially in areas such as the bathroom, hallways, and courtyard. Eighty-one percent of students decided that this was the topic that needed the most improvement. One sixth grade response from the Student Engagement Survey put it, quote, "The bathrooms are always dirty, not because of the janitor, the janitor does great, but the kids are the ones who make it gross." Campus cleanliness, a deeper dive. Principal Mapes has informed us that the bathrooms are cleaned daily. Therefore, the issue originates from students, misbehavior, and misuse of resources. A quote from seventh grade response, "The school could clean the school bathrooms daily. It seems that students are not aware of what's already being done." Some possible solutions: Teachers and student ambassadors could increase awareness about school cleanliness, and more signage could be posted requesting students to change their behaviors. One eighth grade response said, quote, "I find that the school is often dirty. However, I believe the responsibility shouldn't solely fall on the adults. Students should also be more considerate of the campus and take greater care in keeping it clean."
Our next topic is discrimination on campus. The problem: One in three students report feeling unsafe or unwelcome at school due to the behavior of other students. This can come in forms of bullying or most commonly verbal abuse. Bad behavior is often not addressed in a significant manner, leading to repetition. And unfortunately, we are not the only ones who notice this. One seventh grader says, quote, "Many people use racial slurs for fun, and they be rude to their friends, and then say that it's just a joke. It makes the victim feel hurt and upset, and the victim might do the same thing to get revenge or just feel better about themselves."
One of the ideas we've developed as a mean to solve this issue is an anonymous reporting system students could use to tell their teachers or counselors about any discrimination issues and/or struggles that they are facing at school. In addition to this, stricter disciplinary policies should be added to discourage discriminatory behavior among students. An eighth grader at AMS has even suggested that stronger consequences are needed to make it clear that discrimination will not be tolerated. There have been multiple advisory lessons in the past that have covered topics such as discrimination and racism, but we as students have noticed that there hasn't really been a significant change in behavior from our classmates. We believe that by actively promoting the reporting system and consistently enforcing stricter disciplinary policies, our school can take real steps toward becoming a safer and more respectful environment for everyone.
All right, our third major issue is different learning styles. All right, so here's the main problem. Students at AMS struggle with the same learning system for all. What do we mean by that? We mean that some kids feel like they're far ahead of the material, and some people believe they are slightly behind others. So as one sixth grader said, "I have discussed with a lot of my peers of how we aren't being pushed enough in certain subjects, or that they've learned these methods several times in previous grades. I've also have heard that most teachers don't push to make lessons interesting, and this has come from many students, not, not just a few." So we have some possible solutions. So in the short term, we can discuss with teachers how they can alter their material to cater to each and every student. However, if we're looking at this in the long term, we can develop some tutoring systems to help students that are behind catch up with their peers.
So moving on to some additional info from the survey, we, while analyzing the data, we noticed that the overall mean school experience was a seven on a ten-point scale. We also noticed that the mean school experience among those who use the counselor's office was one point lower than this, a six out of ten. This coupled with the fact that over seventy percent of the school doesn't use, don't use the counselor's office. This was troubling to see. However, we're developing a follow-up survey to send to the middle school to identify the cause behind this issue and to hopefully solve it. Now moving on to some of the key takeaways from the survey, a recurring theme in all of these problems is a lack of student awareness and an excess of student misbehavior. A possible solution to combat this would be to have a poster that we can put up around the school with information that most students might not know. Our main goal with this is to increase student awareness and to hopefully get some students to change their behavior. Last but not least, I'd like to acknowledge everybody who's helped us along the way with this survey. First, I'd like to thank Principal Mapes for all of his help with administering the survey, and I'd also like to thank Ms. Nolan for being our club advisor and helping us in every meeting. I'd also like to thank the SAC for guiding us this year, and all JSAC members for all their contributions this year. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, you can ask them now.
Thank you guys so much. A big round of applause for all of our students. Does anybody here on the board, any of our student board members have questions or comments for our JSAC?
I'll just comment and say, once again, super impressive. I'm heartened to hear how articulate our students are about what's going on, and the agency you guys have taken to really take these sorts of things on. So super impressive, fully appreciate it, appreciate the information, and I love seeing the themes between the two different presentations to help us know that we're focused on a lot of the right things. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Student Board Member Deoda?
Yeah, I'd also like to just show my appreciation for the JSAC, because like you guys said, you started with five students last year, and now you're at over thirty. And I think you guys just did a really good job on this presentation for a first year at the committee, and I'm sure you guys will do great when you join the SAC in high school, too.
Thank you all. So we are now going to move on to item eight, no, item nine, sorry, public comment for matters not on the agenda. If you're here in person and would like to approach the podium, please do so, and if you're in our virtual audience, you could raise your hand. Okay, I am seeing one person in our virtual audience. Please, let me just, okay, you can go ahead.
Hello, board. My name is Nicole Ortega, and I was calling because I wanted to discuss your last board meeting that I was listening to and attended on March twenty-fifth. I reviewed the minutes, and it said you guys read adjourned at eight thirty, at eight forty-five. And I just want to let you know that that didn't happen, and I was on till after nine PM, and I have recording of that, and it still showed that the Albany Unified School District Board of Education regular meeting Zoom wallpaper was still up. That, this is the third time that that's happened, and I just want the community to be aware that you guys are not read- readjourning and letting the public know what you, what you guys are doing behind closed doors, and I think that's, goes against the transparency. And so I'm just raising that concern, and I hope that that continues to actually stop. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just quickly ask you, are you still there?
Yes.
And what time, sorry, which meeting you said that was, April the?
March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
March twenty-fifth. Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more public comment for matters not on the agenda? Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we are now going to move on to item ten, which is the approval of the consent calendar. Anybody have any, on the board have any?
I move to approve the consent calendar as is.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar passes. Thank you. And now we are moving on to item eleven. Have our Chief Human Resources Officer, Marina Gonzalez, introduce our public hearings.
Good evening, everyone. So this public hearing is to sunshine the proposal that's from Albany Teachers Association to the school district. And the sunshine proposal just lets the public know what we, what ATA intends to, to open for the contract, and it's an opportunity for the public to comment.
So I'm now opening this public hearing regarding the sunshine negotiation proposal from Albany Teachers Association, ATA, to Albany Unified School District, twenty-five to twenty-eight collective bargaining agreement. Do we have any comment from the public?
I stand here, yes. My name's Ev Kavicki. I'm with CTA. I work with the Albany Teachers Association. Thank you for hearing all of us today, trustees, Superintendent Stone. You're probably going to look at this and say, "We're not getting a ton of money this year. What are teachers thinking and educators thinking when we're proposing lower class sizes and, and meeting professional salary requirements and keeping our campuses safe and secure and stable?" Because we're asking for a lot of things in this sunshine agreement. We're asking for a lot of things in negotiations. I want to be really clear, we're asking for these things because we need them. Our students need them, and they deserve them. We're really clear that you do not have the ability to meet every one of these demands. And we've been clear with our members about that, and we're going to be clear with all of you about that, too. But these are things that are worth fighting for. These are the lifeblood of our work. A lot of our members have been here, not just for a few years, bringing this generation of kids through Albany, but literally generations of families in Albany through these schools. And their connections with the community are deep, their love for the work is deep, and these are things that we desperately need, even though we understand you cannot deliver all of the things we are asking for. But we're doing this for a reason, and that is partially because of the times we're in right now, where we are really well aware that we are going to have to be prepared to fight. That doesn't necessarily mean we're going to have to be prepared to fight you, but we are going to have to be prepared to fight, whether that's around some of the national policies coming down to keep our students and families safe, to make sure that we're protected against some of these policies coming down from DC, and as we've always done, to try to get the revenue we need to make these things more than a dream. So we hope that you will join us in some of those fights while recognizing that our first one might have to be with you. We expect you to show up in good faith and do the best you can, which is what you would expect of any of us, too. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else here like to make a comment? I'm not seeing any, so we're going to close this public hearing. And we are moving on now to item eleven B, the hearing regarding the sunshine negotiation proposal from AUSD to ATA for twenty-five to twenty-eight.
And likewise, this is the list of articles that the district intends to open, and this is a hearing to give the public an opportunity to comment.
So I'm now opening this hearing, and please approach the podium if you have anything you would like to comment on. And I am seeing none, so closing that public hearing. Thank you very, very much, and thanks so many of you for being here tonight. So we are now going to move on to item twelve, which is our superintendent and board member reports. And where are we starting? Let's go down to trustee Incles. Do you have a report?
I do. I just have a couple announcements from the high school. A few big congratulations to the Albany High School Chamber Singers, who were at an invite-only state competition and took second place. They're awesome. They also received honors for stage presence, professionalism, and artistic excellence. Now, there's one in the room, so congratulations. Also, the Albany High School Wind Ensemble went to New York, I think I mentioned this last time, and they also won the highest rating for, a gold rating from the judges, which is fantastic. And Theater Ensemble went to a regular competition, and Basie Mumert, I'm sorry, I'm probably mispronouncing that, won outstanding lead for actress for Fiona in the play Shrek. So that's awesome. Great performances at the high school. And finally, the last PTSA meeting for the high schools on Monday. Thank you.
As usual, I have probably the longest board report. Next month, fifth through the ninth, we have Teacher Appreciation Week. We have a sign-up potluck for families. If you would like to bring a dish to share with our teachers, please do so. It's circulating pretty much everywhere. May eighth, we have open house from six to seven PM. We also have the fifth grade class fundraiser. Our fifth grade teachers and students are working together to fundraise for the ropes course field trip for our fifth grade class. Please come and support them before open house officially starts. May fifteenth, we have our PTA meeting at six thirty PM at the Ocean View Library. We also had our election at the previous meeting and have filled our key roles, but we would still love to have more members on the PTA board. If you're interested, you can still be appointed for an executive or regular board member role, so please let the president know if you're interested. May sixteenth, we have a talent show at six thirty PM at the multipurpose room. All are welcome to join us. Tickets sell out every single year, so please buy your tickets early. I know we have Mr. Jingle Jeff in the audience, and he always does a wonderful performance with the students at the talent show as well. Looking forward to it again this year. And then, D-LAC met last week. Superintendent Stone presented the LCAP and provided the community and members to provide feedback. It was a really great session, and I really appreciated the opportunity for everyone to be able to share their thoughts, see how we all approached the different issues, and it was just, it was great space for that. Lastly, I want to close really quickly with a quote that I came across at work, actually. It says, "I can tell" It says, "I can tell you that here on the edge of everything, we are each other's best hope. As people, we are builders in an era of collapse. Our work is set against all probability and it is in that space of cherished improbability where our art will be made, where our joy will be found, and where our ingenuity will fashion ways for love and caring for each other. And even as the ground shifts beneath our feet, life will be a scramble, but we will not scramble alone. Together, we will fight for this world to keep it." And I share that because in a time where there's so much turmoil and so much unsafety, especially in a space in California where we should expect better from our leadership in Sacramento particularly, I share this because at the end of the day, it's us, it's little people like us that make that difference. Just last week, my kiddo actually ended up joining me in Sacramento and gave public comment on a bill. He's never done this before, but in that moment, he was inspired because he heard something that resonated with him as a, like, recently 10-year-old. So, and I share that because for me, that was a moment of hope that reminded me that, you know, you could be someone that is well-seasoned in your profession or you could just be a kid who hears something, resonates with it, and speak up and make a difference for our community. And that's what we need right now the most. So, I thank everyone who continues to bring that hope in the spaces where we are feeling it being shut down. So, thank you.
Nicely done, well said, well said. Couple of administrative announcements. First, over at Marin, on May 1st, PTA meeting at 6:30. On the 3rd, the PTA STEM events from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That should be really exciting, I know they put a ton of work into it, so be there. I think they've got food and all sorts of stuff, it's going to be great. And May 8th is open house at the Albany Children's Center. May 17th is the, that's a Saturday, that's their open house. And there'll be games, face painting, and food. But most exciting for me is going to be an appearance by the Albany Fire Department. And then a few updates about my goings-on. Last week, I attended with trustee Khan, the Combined Student Achievement Committee and D-LAC, District English Learner Advisory Committee. Superintendent Stone is on her, you know, roadshow with data about the district, sharing some of the data that she learned from her listening tour, some of which she heard and repeated back to us today from our students, which is fantastic. And using that to put together the LCAP, our Local Control Accountability Plan. And I'd encourage members of the public to engage and help shape and focus this for the districts. If you've got an opportunity to engage in this, please do. Especially with regards to some of our most at-risk populations. Additionally, I was also able to attend the System Bond Oversight Committee and want to thank those involved for volunteering their time as they put together the bond oversight report that's going to come before this board eventually. And I was also able to complete the California School Board Association's Masters in Governance Program. And this program kind of helped me improve my knowledge of some of the tools available to support this district around things like student achievement, governance, school finance. I'd like to thank the district for supporting me on this. And then lastly, in the spirit of learning and also sort of in the spirit of transparency, I want to share that I created a GPT focused on Albany Unified to experiment with AI. I was inspired by an experiment by reporter Henry Blodgett, who created an AI newsroom for his Substack Regenerator. And I won't go into details, but it motivated me to create Albe, a school board advisory AI to provide fast, accurate, and neutral information based on district documents, board policies, and California public education law. I also undertook this task to help me think about the need for AI education in our schools. Albe has done some things well and some things less well. It was great help in helping to find comparable school districts to look at academic performance and funding. It did less well in helping me understand a specific board policy from our 2,200-page board handbook. And to be honest, it got this info wrong. The learning for me was not, it was that we need to equip our kids with the right skills to use this technology effectively, to be healthy skeptics if they want to discover what is true, and to help them be great digital citizens.
Wow, this is a great board report session, it's so diverse. Mine's a little more traditional. On Thursday at Cornell School, it's the PTA meeting, May 1st, at 6:00 till 7:30 in the multipurpose room. And then the following evening on Friday is the PTA movie night, The Wild Robot. That's from 6:30 to 8:45 PM on the Cornell Yard. And then, next Tuesday, the district office, we have the Board Policy Committee, as usual, at 5:00 till 7:00. We had it last week also. People are welcome to come. And then, May 15th, the Cornell Open House is that evening. So, thank you, there's anything else?
So sorry.
Go for it.
I forgot to mention, last weekend, Familias Athena's actually helded a, holded, sorry, I'm tired. They held an event called Posters With Purpose. And I want to highlight this event because the majority of our participants were actually students and they, we provided the school, school supply, art supplies, posters, snacks, et cetera, and they did the work of creating their own posters that felt like they were able to express their voice and their concerns in a proactive and positive way around what is going on in the world right now. It was just super inspiring and some of our teachers may end up seeing those posters showing up in your classrooms or in the libraries. So, look out for that, we may be doing that event again soon just because it was a perfect and, you know, kid-friendly way to engage on a topic that's so difficult, especially today.
Thank you so much, and thanks for, I'm glad you remembered it. And now, we're moving on to item 13, matters introduced by the board, future agenda items. Is there anything else we would like to add to future agendas? Go ahead.
The SEC wants to do the site visit presentation on the... When's the next one for me?
Okay, it's gonna, that's a really good question. No, it's going to be on the 13th of May and then the two weeks, two weeks after that as well.
Okay. I think the 13th of May.
Okay, we'll have a look and see, we've already started, well, yeah, we'll definitely liaise with you, thank you. Okay, any other business for future agendas? No, thank you so much. So, before we adjourn, I just want to mention that we are now going to be convening to part two of this evening, which is a Board of Education Study Session on Proposition 28. We need about 15 minutes just to get our tables sorted out, we're going to have a more informal kind of gathering here. So, we're going to adjourn now at 8:15 and we'll reconvene in about 15 minutes. Thank you so much, we're adjourned.